Was that Jim's?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting of Planning Board, Town of Newbury on Wednesday, March the 2nd to order. My name is John Weiss, to my left.
Jim Robinson.
Pete Pecos.
George Morris.
John O'Connell.
Martha Taylor.
Martha's a town planner. So, on the agenda tonight, meeting minutes of December 16th. Has everyone had a chance to look at those? And does anyone have any comments?
And I have extra hard copies if anybody needs a set.
And if you, it doesn't sound, you didn't look at them?
I didn't get all the way through them. I've had a bad day. I got them here printed out.
Do you wanna, do you wanna wait until the next?
Okay, why don't we, we'll put them to the next meeting then, if no one has had a chance to read them. Okay, and then let's get them all done. We meet again on the 16th?
16th, yep, yep.
So, let's just see if we can have that in the other minutes by then, okay?
Yeah, and Elizabeth will be here at that time, too, so that's probably.
Okay, let's do that. Okay, appearances, Ben Osgood and Arthur.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good. I'm Ben Osgood for TCI Environmental. Arthur and Sam are property owners. We were here, I think, back in December, last meeting in December. They own 105 High Road. They have a 16-acre parcel of land and they'd like to do a cluster development. We kind of, in reading the bylaw, we're trying to stay with the spirit and keeping communication open with the board. That's why we came in with a very general plan back in December. I think the board said, "We'll go back and get a little bit more information, sit down with Martha, and let's, you know, see, make sure everything meets the regulations on our approved plan, our yield plan." So, we've done that, we went out and finished the survey, we have topographic information. We actually went out and did test pits. They were unwitnessed because the Board of Health will not witness them during the winter months, but I did them. I'm a soil evaluator. I've done a lot of work with the Board of Health, so I'm pretty familiar with the soils in the area. Generally, we did find sand. The soils on the site are really good, so. We also, you know, completed all the mapping, wetlands and so on. It is, it's a long, narrow site, and these two pieces kind of stick just like that.
Oh, I was wondering, yeah, I got it now, okay.
So, it's a, I believe it's a six-acre parcel of land up front, right? Six and a half up front. A balance of about 10, close to 10 is down here. And then, actually, this little piece here sticks up here. So, we had the wetlands marked out, I kind of have them shaded in green. We have floodplain that's just from the town GIS maps and the FEMA maps, we've checked them both. And then there's a small area out here on the very end, this part of the ACEC associated with the, so what they would like to do is develop up to eight units in a cluster fashion up front. What we wanted to do was just talk to the board and get agreement that we can do four lots here. So, we have designed a roadway. It meets all the regulations, it's got 30-foot roundings, it's 50-foot right-of-way. The proper cul-de-sac diameter, it's only 500 feet to the end. The lots all have the required frontage, they all have the required area. And as you can see, from this area to High Road, there are no wetlands at all. So, these lots are, except for little tiny, a couple little tiny spots, there's a wetland here, and a little tiny spot here. There's a hundred percent upland area, so the lots are all 60,000 square feet in size, so they can handle.
So, show me the lot, I mean, I see the two that jump out at me as I'm looking at it, and I think there's another one that's down at the bottom of the cul-de-sac. Where's the, where's the fourth?
So, here's lot, lot one is this lot right here, okay? And the frontage is along here, and then it has a long tail, a larger area out here. Actually, it has two building locations, you could put a building here, or you could actually put a building down here if you wanted to.
That is pretty ugly.
Right. They would, they wouldn't want to build this. So, dimensionally, it works. It's not pretty, but it does work. So, here we have lot two.
Right.
And then we have lot three is frontage here, and then lot four, this is all frontage for lot four, a little buildable area here, and then there's a tail, and these tails are 25 feet, so there's plenty of room to get a driveway, another buildable area there. So, they connect, so the frontages are here, but they have long tails out to, you know, more of the area.
Okay.
If this were done, they would have to take the house and put it probably on lot one, move it over there.
Well, there's the house and the barn. Both, both go under this plan?
Probably both of them over, right.
And the swimming pool.
A little more difficult for that, but, so again, this is just a approved plan. So, what, what we wanted to do was just come to the board and Arthur and meeting together, and we talked about how we proceed. I think the next best step is if the board does agree that, you know, these are four lots here, is to set up, you know, come in with a landscape architect, and a design plan for a cluster, and then meet, just on a staff level, maybe with a couple of planning board members on an informal basis, to talk about alternatives and then get it to something that might be good to bring back to the board for approval, so. What I kind of had my, had laid out in my mind, from here forward, is to have that, you know, informal process that might take three or four weeks, narrow down the ideas of the landscape architect, the owner, from the planning board, get it towards a plan that might be good, that everybody can agree upon, and then come back to the board for a more formal approval of that kind of preliminary layout, and then file a special permit application for the OSRD, and come before the board for the hearings and the full review, and so on.
The, John, have you had a chance to look at?
I have not, I have not.
Martha, what's your, what's your thought on this, at this stage? I mean, I agree with what you're saying. We'd want to sit down with you because obviously, it's a question here of whether or not this does meet our criteria.
That's the biggie, yeah, and I'd.
And if it does, then we'd love to work with you to make something better, that's all. Right? I mean, that's, that's my take.
Yeah, and we did meet and sort of talk through the process that Ben was just, just describing. So, if, if the board does feel that these are, you know, lots that meet our criteria, as unattractive as they, they actually are, and the Costonuses have made it clear that this is not what they want to do, this is just the exercise to get to the number of units that could be done.
Sure, right. It's just first step to the process, yeah.
First step, and then we have to agree to this, and then we sit down, we'll figure out the right design. I think that makes sense.
And if I remember right, the bylaw does have some criteria that we need to look at.
Right, and that's why I'm not 100% certain, or have you checked those things off, Martha?
I have, you know, it, it meets the, meets the frontage, the square footage, and the amount of upland criteria. We don't have any, anything that stipulates how wide or narrow the lot has to be, so, you know, I believe that it does.
But it has, but it does have frontage and rear and side yard requirements.
Right, and Ben has actually shown, shown the setbacks on, on the plan. They all meet the frontage requirements.
I can see the frontage, but I guess it's the side.
Well, the sides are shown, yeah, the sides are shown.
Now that I, now that I look at, because of the place where, where you would build, the sides are probably adequate.
So, how much, what are the two driveway widths? What's the property line to property line distance?
25 feet.
25?
Right.
Okay.
And actually, one, one of them's 30. This one here's 30, and this is 25.
Okay.
Who's, who's next to you? I, I don't have an aerial of this. Who's, who's next to you? I know, on the front, I know, I know the house in the front, Arthur, but who's to the north?
That's Catherine O'Brien.
Catherine O'Brien.
And I can't remember who's on the other side of you, is that?
It's the.
The Colby family.
That is the Colbys.
Oh, that is the Colbys?
Yeah. It's all agricultural land.
Even the, what about the house in the front? That's not Colby, is it?
Directly.
You know the one that's right, right across from Tender Croft?
The gray, the gray house.
The gray house.
Chris, Barney Simpson.
Okay.
And the Duns.
And then, so this is agricultural, so the Colbys are farming this back there, or they're not?
Yeah, this is all field back here.
Hay field.
Is that the one that's in, in preservation, agricultural preservation restriction?
I believe the development rights were sold, and the Colby family bought property in it.
I think that the Colbys cut hay there, I believe.
Yeah, yeah.
They hay every year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One of the better fields that they have.
I think because of the extraordinary length of these driveways, it may pay to bounce this off Nate, and there's some wetland back here, show it to Doug, that.
Just, just to make sure everybody's comfortable with the approved plan.
To make sure everybody is on board with this.
Yeah, and I would, I would concur with that. It's a good idea.
Yeah, I don't want to say, I don't want to vote on this without ringing it out.
Right, I mean, this is going in the right direction, sorry, we just don't have that information, so why don't we ask you to, who else might want to take a look at it?
I don't have any issues with it, I just.
Yeah, I agree.
Just as Pruden says, don't spend more than three.
And only because of its unusual geometry here, you know, it's just very, very unusual.
Right.
How long is the driveway for lot four?
They would be quite long, and I think it's 800 feet back, this area here.
That is a long. So, what's?
The total property length is over 1,200 feet.
It's Elizabeth's.
I don't know what hers is.
Which what?
Elizabeth's driveway.
I don't know.
It's probably close.
Not the same, pretty close to the same.
About the same?
Yes.
And then the property that's, what's that, you know, I forgot her name all of a sudden, but the long, long drive?
No, the one behind, behind.
That goes, you know, right next to.
Colby.
Oh, never mind, I, Carol, Carol's.
Oh, Debbie York.
Debbie York's.
Yeah, that was long, I can't remember how long that was.
That was gonna be, I think that was a little different.
And when was that approved?
Because that was going to become a subdivision. This is a driveway, and I'm not sure we've got anything that regulates driveway lengths. We do have cul-de-sac limitations, and she wanted something like two and a half times the size of what we allow by, although we bent the rules that two and a half is a little greedy.
Yeah.
But I think because of the potential difficulty in fighting a fire, where the hell back here, it's worth, just courtesy, you always let the fire chief have a peek at it and see what he thinks.
Usually, you get a driveway that long, they like to have a little wider driveway that they can negotiate with a little turnaround area for their truck.
About 25 feet, if you can get, 25 feet gives you room enough, just barely with a shoehorn, to get two fire trucks to pass if they have to. It's, I mean, they'd like to have 22 paved, but I don't think they absolutely have to have that. This will be what they have to have.
Right. I think a driveway typically.
I'm sorry?
I think a driveway typically 12 or 14 feet, they'd want to have at least the ability to turn their truck around, you'd make a little bit larger turnarounds.
Oh, boy, I think they'd have an awful time turning a piece of apparatus around in, in 25 feet.
Yeah.
Well, down.
Certainly not the last.
When they get, when they get down to the lot.
Down there, they would be able to have it, yeah.
You'd, you'd have the turnaround down at the bottom, that's where you'd put it.
Yeah, they would definitely want to see that, but it looks like you've got enough room there to, that's not, shouldn't be an issue. I'm just concerned about the long stretch of relatively narrow road. And down at the end of, the, the, the next to the longest lot, you've got some wetlands, and that's going to restrict there.
Yeah, there's a little bit of wetlands down.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a little bit of a shoehorn exercise.
So, I guess the question I had was maybe similar to the question I had when you came in in December, is that.
No, I think it's the setbacks.
Let's just assume you are gonna do something which is, you know, radically different than this, you want to do an OSRD. How do you do this without disrupting the structures that you own and are living in now?
The barn will have to be moved.
Just the barn?
Just the barn.
But the house is okay?
The house would be okay. I mean, we, we discussed this a little bit at our meeting the other day. It, it, there are a bunch of different ways to do an OSRD, you could do a private roadway without a dedicated right-of-way, per se, where it's.
Well, not exactly, I mean, you have to have the right-of-way.
Well, you're right, but it's not a public right-of-way.
It's not a public right-of-way.
It's not a public way that's maintained, you know, if you would just have a, a right-of-way, does it need to be 50 feet wide?
Well, that's.
To get to an OSRD.
Yeah, I mean, that still is the, we talked about this, that's a starting point, so if you wanted to do something different, it would be waivers that you would be requesting.
Right, and, you know, this, I understand part of the OSRD process, there needs to be some give, I think, to do a really good job, you know, narrower right-of-ways, as long as everything is safe and access is proper, and they don't necessarily need to be, because if you're gonna have to do a subdivision roadway, it may not, it may just be better to do a subdivision roadway.
Well, what?
Than doing an OSRD, that's a different standard.
Right, so what's, what's the right-of-way for DePuro?
I'd have to check on that.
I mean, that's kind of like maybe the concept of what, I don't know if it's the, but I mean, in terms of the right-of-way, and then the smaller enclosed kind of community, because that, I mean, if you're talking eventually of building eight, what, single-family, closely detached homes or something, I mean, without, you don't have your plan yet, but I mean, it's.
To be honest with you, we don't.
You don't?
We, I think it's the concept that if I may, and be very frank with these people I know, I just want to, we would like to explore the potential.
Okay.
And this is not the direction we want to go at all.
Okay.
It's a necessity.
Well, when we, we don't approve the subdivision, what do we do? We just approve the yield plan?
Right, and that will determine the number of units, the starting point.
Okay, that determines where, where we go with the OSRD process, okay.
So, I understand, and it was explained to me, it's just a starting point.
Yep.
That, because we need a starting point, everybody, and.
So, I would think it would be reasonable, would it not, that we could vote on this the next meeting?
Yep.
Not that big a deal.
We'll get the input from the, we'll get the input from the Fire Department and Concom, and we'll vote on it on the 16th, okay?
Okay, well, on DePuro, just one, one comment on that, since it was a U-shaped, one-way road, I think we did, it was reduced a little bit, we didn't have the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, we did reduce, and the pavement is certainly reduced.
And the pavement's reduced, but it wasn't for two-way traffic, it's one-way.
But it's because, it's that, it's not, it's not a cul-de-sac.
The pavement's 18 feet there.
Yeah.
It probably is.
But again, it's, it's a one-way road, not a two-way road, so.
Correct. One-way, and it moves.
I'm sorry, I missed the import of that, I don't.
Well, I had raised, I had raised the concept of, in terms of the fact that for DePuro, we had narrowed the roadway.
Yeah.
And Martha reminds us that's a one-way loop.
Yeah.
Not a two-way street.
Okay, so it's nothing to do with this?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Right, and I think our concept, where we're heading, is to bring in a roadway in this area here. It may hug the property line more, would not have the huge roundings, it may be kind of snuck down through here, but it would be like a 22-foot-wide pavement, until it came down here and then have a one-way loop with some houses around it. Not a typical cul-de-sac, but, you know, more of a green area that might have a one-way around it, so that was.
Well, I think the difficulty is gonna, is gonna be that, that area there, because the, I mean, I'm looking, what is the distance between the northernmost part of your house and your property line? I, I can't, I can't get the scale off of this, but.
It's about 50 feet.
It's about.
Right to the corner.
Right, right to the corner of the house, to the.
Right, yeah.
That's pretty tight.
That's why.
Well, let's start, let's, I mean, let's start the process. Okay, any, any members want to add any other questions, or do you have any other concerns?
I just, out of curiosity, I missed earlier on, what is the thinking with the chart on the floor?
This is just the second half of the piece of property.
Mm-hmm.
So, these properties join like that.
Jimmy, that's the, this is the first part.
And if you look at, if you look at, this is the locus map here.
Yeah.
That actually has, that shows you the whole property, you know, on a much smaller scale, so, but that's just to.
Much of those wetlands, yeah.
Right. That's correct, just to show you how they kind of go together.
Yeah, right, okay.
And then also to demonstrate, there's a lot of resource area down here, there's really not a lot of opportunity to do much down there anyways, so kind of emphasize that everything would happen here. I mean, this, if we did proceed, we have a six-acre piece of land, we'd keep three acres of open space here, so all this area down here would probably stay open, and the homes would be up more on the top of the hill closer to High Road.
John, anything else?
I just, just, the thought occurred, Martha, the, the wetlands are down at the back, if this were all one lot, all one parcel, does that mess up anything, or are there not enough wetlands to be a problem?
Well, if they're doing the OSRD, I mean, it doesn't, doesn't mess up anything with the yield plan.
Yeah, okay, that was my question.
Okay.
Your OSRD, you could, you could create a, it's a non-buildable lot anyway, so you could make it really non-buildable and cut it off as a, as an inaccessible lot, they exist all over the place.
Right, right. And, you know, we haven't decided how the open space would be situated, and what would happen to each piece of land, how it would be used, that's way down the road.
Sure.
You know, we, our thought was, this is, this is kind of a technical step that an engineer does, surveying, engineering, that's why I'm here doing this. We have not brought an architect on board yet. I have two people we're talking to, and we're ready to make a decision on, on one of them, you know, a landscape architect who would help us go through the development process and identify the valuable resources that are here, and try to come up with something that would be fitting for the neighborhood and, you know, maintain those resources, try to preserve them, so that's kind of step two, and that's, once we get through this and we know what we're dealing with, then we go to step two and get the landscape architect on board, so.
Do we need to do anything else? Just accept this and then, we need to vote on it?
Um.
To accept it? Is this an official submitted?
There's really no, you have legal law, there's no formal.
No.
It just says the yield plan must be acceptable to the planning board, I think. So, I think.
I think that.
At the next meeting, and just take in a formal vote, I believe.
Yeah, like a straw, straw vote or something, yeah.
The standards are not terribly high, right?
Right.
Yeah, doesn't matter whether, it doesn't have to be assailable or it even makes sense, it just has to be in conformance with the, with the requirements.
Right.
Zoning and subdivision control.
Okay, so that we don't do a lot, I mean, the only thing I know is we're gonna refer to Fire and to Concom.
And to Concom.
And let's not get into an extracted process, and then we'll vote on it next.
Next session.
Next session, sorry. All right, thank you very much.
I'll talk to you.
Thank you. Well, I suppose I should have gone on this.
Thank you.
Thanks, Arthur.
Thank you.
Nice meeting you. On the public hearing continuation.
I think we have to wait until 7:30 on that.
We have to, oh, well then, okay, let's, subdivision rules and regs, review comments? I unfortunately just got some copies of, of comments that I got from Joe, and I just started to look at them, so I don't know. Do we have any other comments? Did you get the peer reviews?
I got one back.
You got the peer reviews back?
I've got, I sent out three, and I got one back. One guy's in Colorado and the other one is in Florida, so we will get them eventually and certainly in time for the public hearing, before we wrap it up, but before we, we're not gonna have them, I don't believe, before, I'd like to schedule the public hearing.
Before, oh, okay.
You haven't gotten anything appreciable back from town departments, have you?
No, I haven't, I sent out a reminder, I got comments from Pete.
Yeah.
But I haven't gotten anything back. I, I'd like to get Concom, I'd like to get Town Council in particular.
Oh, yeah, yeah, definitely.
So, can we just say we'd like your comments by X, X date and go from there? I mean, and if you, if you haven't said anything, we assume they're approved.
I'd like to get the planning board's input on some of these items. There's several different categories of items, you weren't here at the last meeting, but there's, there's one at least that I just missed, and I totally agree with him. There's another category that he feels that our, we're too restrictive, but he's not aware of the opinions of the Fire Department and the Highway Department, and I think we don't try to tell them how to do their job, we just, whatever they want, it's quite all right with me personally. And the, I don't think he, either didn't get or didn't look too carefully at the cross section, he's concerned about we have too much right-of-way. I don't know how in the world we get a foot less right-of-way, it's just so many, you need a 10-pound bag to stow 10 pounds in, so. The biggie that I'd like the planning board's feelings on, there were several issues, and Pete picked up on this too, on, on trees, and I have to agree that what we have, which I, I just copied whole as well as from the previous one, without being, giving it a critical look, and I should have, but I didn't. It probably doesn't make a lot of sense the way it is. The idea was to, I believe, to prevent clearcutting, so you just go and wipe out the whole subdivision, then you buy a few little spindly trees and plant them again. The idea was to prevent that sort of thing, and it certainly does that. I think that the planning board should have, they will state the right-of-way at least roughly, and we can pick, we can pick trees that we want to save. Cul-de-sac would be a real good place to save trees, along the side of the road between the edge of the pavement and the property line, it's gonna, we're gonna be real lucky to save a tree in there that isn't in the way of something. So, I think there's another way of wording that, so that we maintain control, but yet we don't ask for things, we don't, we're not creating a situation that's impossible to make a sensible decision on.
These are Joe's comments?
I mean, these are Joe's comments, yeah. Eric's was, he had one comment, and that was that we're allowing 300 some odd feet from the road, the connecting road, to the beginnings of a P-shaped, none-through street, and he wondered why that was so short when we allow a 500-foot distance for a subdivision, I'm sorry, for a, for a cul-de-sac. And I don't care, you know, if we want to extend that to five feet, I had suggested we make it big enough, and that's what the number we have, so you can get at least two lots in there.
Right, right.
I don't particularly want to get three lots. I would just as soon make the one way, the, the one single road, single access section as small as we can make it, because I am concerned about somebody fighting a fire here, or fighting a fire here with a heart attack victim here, and there's hoses across the street and trucks parked side by side, and the ambulance can't get in without moving fire trucks, and, you know, you, the, the fewer houses you have for that guy with a heart attack, the better. But it's only one more lot at most that we'd be adding. But it's only one more lot at most that we'd be adding. I don't think that's a big deal.
So...
I think that's up to the board, not up to me.
So, we do want to, I mean, I guess where I am is, have you gotten comments from everybody on the board?
No, no, no. I've gotten comments only two, from Joe and from Eric Barnum from Millennium.
Right, but what about board members?
Oh, well, the only one I've heard from is Pete, yeah.
Okay.
Did I represent your thoughts appropriately?
You're okay, yep.
Is that okay? Yeah.
And then, uh...
I mentioned the signage.
Signage.
The signage at the last meeting, I remember I brought up.
Okay, yeah, I...
Yeah, do we, do we want to...
I don't know what to say about signage, it's in zoning.
What was your question?
Oh, there was this, we can't have a...
Restriction on having a...
There's a restriction on...
Permanent signing for a...
Yeah.
And I think that, I think that actually conflicts with what we have in our zoning right now, I need to, I need to check that.
Is that right?
Yeah, yeah, either change the by...
So we allow it in zoning? I thought we didn't. I thought we didn't allow it.
The sign by law.
Yeah, I understand, but we, we don't, you don't allow the permanent sign for like Shaker Heights or whatever it is, whatever the name of the subdivision, to be there in the subdivision, like, I don't think you allow, it's not allowed in the zoning code.
Right, so we need to coordinate, we need to coordinate one or the other.
You see where he says this, just a second.
Well, we gotta do this, it's seven thirty. Uh, let's just hold, yeah, let's just hold this for a second.
Yep.
So, I don't open the meeting.
No.
Do you have language?
Um, I think all...
Just read the letter.
Yeah, say that we've gotten a request to continue, and then...
Okay, we have a request from Borrego Solar to the board. We respectfully request that you continue our public hearing until March sixteenth, twenty sixteen. There are outstanding issues we are working on with DEP, Department of Environmental Protection. We would like to have those issues and items addressed prior to meeting with the board. Sincerely, Steve Long, professional engineer. And I know that we have discussed this with some of the adjacent property owners, and they have a problem with the sixteenth, and so it is, we have a, do we have a follow-up?
So, April sixth.
We have a follow-up note from Steve saying he's fine with April sixth.
Yeah.
So it is, we would like to recommend, I would like to, I guess, recommend to the board members that we continue the public hearing to April the sixth.
Right, so you need a motion and a second.
So I would like to get a motion on that and a second.
To the sixth and a time certain.
Seven thirty, is seven thirty, makes sense, just seven fifteen on the second.
Either...
We do seven thirty for this one, but actually we could get something done ahead of time.
Okay.
Yeah, it makes sense.
All right, let's do seven thirty on April the sixth, time certain, we have a motion and your second?
Second.
Any comment on that?
Who made the motion?
John.
John, okay.
Any comment at all on it? All those in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay, back to the subdivision regs, I guess the only thing I want to make sure is that, I mean, John was just mentioning to you that we haven't received comments from, you know, our, our town members, not, not board members.
Right, right.
And when were they sent to them?
Um, they were sent to them, I had requested comments back by the eighteenth and sent them a reminder.
Of February.
Because we have a February, so I sent, I sent it in January, so...
Well, I'd say Ginny and Doug are absolute have-tos. Other people, I don't much care if they...
Well, Ginny, Ginny, Ginny is, Ginny is, you're right, Ginny is very important.
Oh, yes, extremely.
So, so, you know...
Yeah, so I sent a reminder today, and I will send another one at the first of the week.
The board would like to have this finished by this time, we need your comments by this time.
Right, I asked for them by the middle of next week at the latest, so...
Okay, okay, good, good, good.
I would like to, I got a few more things to comment on here, but I would like to have the public hearing scheduled by the end of this month, okay? It doesn't have to happen this month, but I've got to show the EPA some signs of life.
All right.
Got to show that we have a pulse, and if we have it scheduled, that will be something.
I think that's a good idea.
And then, I don't see why that couldn't happen.
So, can we schedule that at our next meeting?
Yeah, I think we should aim to do that, I think if we could hold it in April, that would be...
Holding it in April would be fine.
Good.
The thirty-first of March is the cutoff, and I have April to get the report in.
Yeah.
But if we can say that...
So we're only...
I could even say that we had it, if it happens in April.
So, but our, so the sixteenth, we're not gonna meet again until April...
Well, we'll meet this, there will be business on the sixteenth.
Right.
So, the board could...
We'll meet on the, it's just we won't have the hearing.
Yeah, so the board could...
And then, we don't meet again until the sixth, so on the, let's set it on the sixteenth.
Yeah.
So, on that, right?
Right, and then probably look for the second meeting in April to be the public hearing.
Okay, set on the sixteenth for April twentieth. All right, okay, all right. Anything else, John?
Oh, I want to deal with this, yeah, I mean, there's quite a few things here. Just on the issue that we had, are we okay with simply stating our concern about clearcutting? And that we, once the center line is staked, we want to have a visit and flag any trees that we want saved?
That we believe makes sense.
That we believe appropriate to save.
Yes.
Yeah, we can...
Do you want to do some language on that?
Yeah, I'll write something up on that.
I think that's fine. I mean, I saw Joe's comments about that, and, and I think that there may be circumstances where you find a tree you want to keep, simple.
Yeah, there would be the occasional one, I think, inside a cul-de-sac, there'd be a lot of circumstances, but on the right of way, we'd be real lucky to be able to pull that off. A tree on the top of the hill, for example, where you get ditches going both ways from it, that would be a possibility.
It impedes construction of the project, it can seriously impede the construction of the project.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and it was not, we didn't say you had to keep the trees, all we said was, we want the opportunity to see.
I think that's fine.
And Joe's, Joe is quite right, in most cases, you can't.
Yeah.
But I think we ought to leave the door open, so if we can, we'll...
I would agree, if you have a specimen, if you have a specimen tree that's unique...
Yeah, and it's got to be in the right place, but that happens. But I think, again, the idea was, don't go in and clearcut it, that's the basic, the basic goal here. There's, I think, thirteen or fourteen things. Where was the sign? Anybody got that in front of them? There was a signage issue that, Jim, you brought up, and I can't remember where it is.
Is it in there? I mean, did Joe, did Joe?
It's in what you distributed, yeah.
On here, yeah, I don't, I don't have the email with me. Maybe, Jimmy, you can just say what it was again, what was the issue?
Well, as I recall, it was, it's forbidden to have a, a sign for a permanent sign.
Okay, saying coming soon, this coming attractions kind of sign.
Well, it's not, it's not that, it's on page twenty-six, it's one seventeen twenty-nine.
This is, uh...
Okay.
And it says subdivisions, permanent signs, permanent signs identifying the subdivision by name are prohibited.
Okay.
Yeah, Caldwell Farms.
Okay.
Caldwell Farms got it.
They've got one.
Livingston Lane has one.
And my question is just why, why would we want to forbid it?
I have no idea. Again, it was something I inherited, I failed to catch it and ask the question you did. I'm glad you watched it, because I think it's, I think it's silly.
Small point, but, yeah.
Yeah.
And I flagged that in the most recent version with a comment also, see what the board wants to do.
Even if it stays in, the board could waive it, so, it could be waived.
Well, in that case, you might want to put in language about, at the board's discretion, rather than...
Yes, yeah.
I mean, yeah, right, or don't allow it, just say, at the board's discretion, we could approve it.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have approval, so we don't get something real tacky, you know...
Yeah.
If somebody wants something really tacky, we can...
I think that's why, I think that's why it was in there, because of, not, listen, they're selling homes, they're selling lots, they usually have to be tasteful, but, you know, and you never know.
Yeah, that's right, yeah. Okay, for the rest of them, I, I really think highly of Joe and value his opinion. I'd like to talk through this, and Martha and I, we're gonna track him down, and we haven't gotten to it yet.
What's the date, did that just come in?
This one, no, this is February third.
Oh.
Yeah, we've had it a while. So, what would you guess, sometime this week, we could...
Yeah, let me, let me contact him tomorrow and see what his schedule is.
Don't make him make a special trip sometime when he's in town.
No, but he, he comes back and forth a lot, so...
Yeah, he's going back and forth, so...
I think that's, obviously of all the people, of all the people, Joe...
Oh, his opinion is the most important, absolutely.
This is big for us, so let's, Martha, if you can do that next week, that would be great.
Again, these things can be held, changes can be held in abeyance. If we've got verbal agreement before the public hearing, we can just add that as another thing, right?
We can.
There's no reason why we have to have it totally complete and perfect for the public hearing.
Okay.
This is a public comment of sorts.
Right, right, but if there are, if there are comments that we know for certain, it would be nice to get those incorporated.
It would be good to get him in if we can, sure.
Okay.
Sure. So, that's it, I don't, there wasn't anything here, well, there were two or three things that I didn't understand where he was coming from. He may have misunderstood, maybe I'm misunderstanding, that's why I want to talk to him.
That's okay.
See what, see where he's coming from. I think he was not quite up to speed on our interest in stormwater management. I mean, not that he doesn't know about it, but he, he was questioning why we would go to country drainage, and there's reasons why you don't want to go to country drainage, but the reasons why you do are overwhelming in that direction.
I mean, generally, I thought that's the direction this, we were going in.
It is, that's my, my point, that's my point.
That's what we're trying to do, okay.
And so Joe, Joe was questioning that, that isn't something I particularly want to negotiate on.
Okay. Then let's take up this sixty-one A on three twenty-three R High Road, have you all taken a look at this?
Mm-hmm.
Plan?
Yeah, I'm not too sure what he can do with that residentially, I mean...
I mean, you can't, unless you own or make a deal with the person who owns the property who has...
Well, you, that, but then that's something else.
But, but it's completely something else.
Yeah, right, it's, it's, it is absolutely something else, and I think you need more than a right to pass and repass, you need a damn road that you own, right?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, and it's...
You've got to own the property.
Unless, unless there's somebody who's gonna merge the two properties into one.
And if it's, um...
Who owns that other property?
Um...
That's got access?
Uh, Joey McFarland owns the one that's on Newbury Neck Road, and then there's somebody, I can't remember her name, who owns the one on High Road. So, but unless, and if, if the lot is grandfathered and has some access easement, maybe there's some way to do it as a single-family house, but if there's any intention to subdivide, then...
Where, in the opinion of the planning board, there's an adequate road kind of language that kicks in, right?
Well, if it were to be a subdivision, yeah.
If there is some way to get to it.
I mean, it's not...
I mean, clearly, there is upland access in one place, but it's right through the middle of somebody's property.
Yeah, it looked to me like it was all...
And that, that may be unbillable, that's a weird-looking lot.
Little island.
Near, there's a little island.
That may have a problem, being buildable, so maybe...
But it would be nice to get some of the thinking behind the proposer of this, you know?
And I can, I can, I did get a contact phone number today, so I can either call or, or see if...
But I guess our, our request here, our request from the selectmen is that, do we see that there's any use that the town might have of this property?
Right.
And does anybody see any use for the town?
Yeah, nope.
I don't either.
I mean, we have an enormous amount of salt marsh in public hands right now.
Right.
We need another acre or two, like...
Right, we don't need that, and we don't need the green heads to come with it.
Well, we're not gonna fill up, fill with some salt marsh to get rid of the green heads, but...
So, I guess that's our opinion, I mean, right? I mean, we don't...
Yeah, I mean, it's basically three things, whether there's any use to the town, whether there's benefit to transfer or assign the right to a nonprofit, and I actually, I meant to check who owns that, and I forgot.
Yeah, who owns the rest of it? It's not the great, great marshes, is it?
Um, I don't know if that's Essex County Green Belt or who that...
Well, that...
Who that is.
Well, it's...
And then the third is to say that, you know, neither makes any sense, and the town should just waive its right.
Well, maybe pending further research, but, but I, I'm willing to just say we have no, we don't believe it has any use for the town, but in terms of if Green Belt owned that land, they may have an interest in it.
Well, let me check on that, and if the board would like, I can try to find out more about what the development plans actually are.
I would like, I would like, because it's very, well...
It's unclear.
It's unclear.
And the selectmen don't need any kind of response until March thirtieth, so we could take it up at the next meeting.
Okay.
We, actually, John's point is right, at this point, we don't care what happens. It's either buildable or it isn't, which we'll decide when somebody wants to build something on it, if and when, so we could vote tonight, could be...
Could, I guess the only question is, if, if a nonprofit owns the adjacent property, does the board see any benefit in assigning...
They want an option to buy it themselves.
And that's, we don't, and we don't know that, yeah.
That's true.
That could be in our recommendation.
Right.
Could be our recommendation.
Right, right.
So I'm willing to put that off.
Yeah, so let's talk about it next time.
Liaison reports, you have the first two, since you went...
I have a little follow-up on the economic development.
Oh, oh, good, what, also the housing committee? Did you do that too?
Yes, yeah, that was the twenty-ninth.
Did you guys do that too?
I don't have any notes that I've written up yet on that, I do have notes on economic development.
Oh, I'd be interested in, in seeing those, thank you, George.
You're welcome.
We should have had this agenda.
Well, didn't have to be. Okay, the focus group for economic development met at the library, right, Peter?
Mm-hmm.
I forget the date, but...
Who was, who was there?
Who was there, there was Peter and George.
Remember, so it's Peter and George?
Uh, Ken Robinson, yes.
George, you there, Jim?
No, my wife was there, I didn't, Saturday's was. It was just for the non-board members, so I was, I missed...
No, it happened on Monday.
I thought it was more for in-public...
She said you didn't want to come.
No, not so.
But she was there, um, let's see, Mr. Kettleson, I can't think who it was, and...
Who, I'm not sure who he is.
There's one other one.
Robin Lawson's husband.
Robin Lawson?
Yeah, I don't know if she was there.
Yeah, she was.
Oh, so both of them, yeah.
Okay.
So there weren't many, and Ron, Ron Barrett.
Oh, was Ron there?
Yes, he came.
And what about, uh, who was the other fellow who wanted to be part of this, is Steve Manchin?
Yeah, he was there, too.
Was that, I see, okay.
Was Joe there?
No.
So, seven or eight people?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And Courtney Starling, our facilitator, said, before we get started, let's set aside all concerns about water and sewer. She asked us to set aside all conditions about water and sewer. Any concerns we had, let's set them aside because we'd never get ahead on anything. Because water and sewer is always the...
They're driving the bus, Chloe.
All right, that's fair.
So, the main decision to make was whether to pursue more, pursue more economic development or not. She raised that question right in the beginning, and if we do want economic development, the question was where? So, you have Route One, the business and light industrial area, Pearson Plaza, because it's immediately off ninety-five, but the availability is questionable. Upper Green area, it's a question of zoning and limited area for development. Even the same for the Lower Green, which she talked about. And Byfield Village, problems with zoning and limited area. So, the query is what kind of economic development is desired, and other benefits and objectives would be jobs and retaining existing businesses. We discussed cleanup of business areas on Route One, including possibility of imposing conditions upon renewal of business licenses, and considering enforcement process. Ron Barrett talked about what can be done with dedicated and strong leadership, as on Plum Island. Economic development will not happen without ongoing leadership, and the question is, it's how to create that leadership for all town. Byfield is key. That's a quick summary. Peter, do you have anything else to add to that?
You've got that. So, at the end of the session?
One more item, excuse me. Uh, there was some discussion about retail. I think, it wasn't your wife, but somebody recommended for them to see if we couldn't get a Whole Foods somewhere in town.
Can't get it in Newburyport.
And the other, the other one would be something like just a coffee shop down in Byfield or some separate location where people in town who are interested in what's going on could sort of meet.
There is one in Byfield.
Yeah.
You could even drink there. It's even better.
Yeah, I wouldn't expect that until after two.
Oh.
Anyway. One of the considerations was that there are business places that provide almost everything in Seabrook and Davis, so within a half an hour either way, you can do much of your business in large facilities, whether, which we would never have here in town. So, there's no point in pursuing that. Do you agree?
I'm wondering why we even bother. We've ridden along without being an industrial hub for almost four hundred years. You know? There is a place in this world for bedroom towns. It's no longer a farming town. I don't know why people keep thinking that it is, it clearly is not, but it is a cart-carrying bedroom community. What the hell is wrong with that?
Uh, there's nothing wrong with it, and that's what the Housing Group discussed this past week. But the main question here is whether we should pursue economic development or not, and that's a decision the town has to make.
Yeah.
Well, the only area that, at least since I've been involved, that we've done anything of any merit was that the major zoning changes we made to Route One and to Pearson Plaza. And the results have been, I think, mixed, you know?
I, I, I think you're being kind, John.
Obviously, the kind of uses that have responded are not heavy kind of uses, and not, not, not in terms of industry, but even large tax-paying uses have not responded. So, actually, I think it's a very difficult thing to have that question without saying, well, if you put water down there, do, would you still want to put? In other words, you look at the cost-benefit analysis of, of putting water down Route One and say, is it worth it in the end to do that? Do you get enough tax benefit to alleviate? And I don't know that, I still don't know that we've answered that.
Without doing a study, just Gutfeld says you'll never pay for that, even if anybody would give us the water or accept the sewage. Still a, still problematic.
So, I'm curious about this, though. That means that Kathleen didn't attend this.
She did not attend it, but it would be nice if we had her here, because she did recommend a one-A, over-L district for, you know, small craftsmen, antiques, and so on.
Well, then we put that on hold. We put that on hold, but the other thing is that she did the major study of the water, and she has all those numbers. And, so you didn't talk about water at all?
Everybody had talked about water before in prior meetings.
I see.
And it made the meeting stagnant, so she wanted us to leave that out. Real fact of the matter is, if you spend six million dollars to bring water down Route One to the Byfield or business light industrial, that might be, what, twenty businesses at most, thirty businesses?
Kathleen did a analysis that if you had a build-out that took ten years, you, it would take a payback of, if you built your, if you built your own well, that it would take, I think it was fifteen years to get any kind of payback in terms of getting the, enough tax revenues from all those uses to offset the cost of the, of the well. And then if you brought the water down from Byfield, I think it was less, because it was less of a cost, but... I mean, there, there's, numbers are there, and, and the question is, well, do we think it makes sense to, to do that? And I, I don't know. All I know is, I don't think we're gonna get any kind of major economic development in this town without water and sewer. And so, unless the town is willing to invest in the, A, their own well, or B, having a discussion with Newburyport, or C, having a discussion with the Byfield Water District, that we ought to stop talking about it. And decide, well, maybe we become a, a bedroom town, I mean, a real bedroom town, and focus residential development and try to get as much tax revenues from the residential properties as you possibly can.
We do have land that is zoned industrial, or industrial business.
Yes.
So, I mean, we've already got three businesses going that are not, that's not like an IBM branch office by any means. We got room for a man. We have some that won't even perk out in the, near the industrial park. The onesies and twosies, we may well be able to work a deal if the developer pays for it, tying into Newburyport, because Newbury was right on the other side of the Little River from the Newbury Industrial Zone. That's a maybe. Or, you know, in some circumstances, maybe they simply drill a well and do something.
Oh, yeah.
In place, in possible.
Yeah, yeah.
Because a little, most of that, I think, is totally unperceivable. It's the basic scat play formation that will absolutely not perk. But I think there may be some on Tommy Bashaw's property where you might be able to get it perked.
Yeah. But, I mean, he's gonna do, what proportion of his property goes to the solar array?
Well, most of the, really, most of the buildable area.
The buildable goes into...
Assuming that goes forward.
You know, assuming that Borrego goes forward, then you lose the most developable business property that we've got.
Right.
How about G R M, that property there?
That'd be lovely to get that, it's just that, e- even to get them cleaned it up, it would be nice. You know, and maybe that, maybe part of the strategy is, I mean, one of the things I was intrigued with is to go to talk to some of the businesses to get, to find out from the property owners, do they have an interest in reinvesting in the properties? Just say, well, we'd like to encourage you to do that, and to talk to G R M about, quite honestly, cleaning up the act. I mean, it is a disgrace. That's the entrance into, into the town from the north.
Definitely needs cleaning up.
And, um...
And that's part of the conditional business license.
You know, and that's, that's not a, an inappropriate thing, is once you clean things up, then maybe you get more people willing to invest because the quality of the environment's better. I mean, that's a lot of ifs there, but...
Yeah.
You may, you might be able to do something, but without, without a commitment from the town to do water, and I suppose we could put that, too, and have a discussion with the selectmen. Say that we've, here's where we are with water. Either we continue doing what we've been doing, which is a little bit here, a yoga studio there, you know, they got, what's it, Angelo's Project, we'll get a bunch of those little things. Or, or you try to go after a lot of new stuff, but it's gonna cost you a lot of money. And let's stop talking about water, then.
Yeah, well, something that's gonna take speculatively fifteen years to pay back, to my way of thinking, is a total non-starter. There's a lot of money that's gonna affect our bonding capacity, it's gonna affect all kinds of things if we're not, if we, if we guess wrong and we're not pulling in the tax revenue that we think we are.
Yeah, that's a big part of it. What kind of assumptions were made?
We can't be too optimistic when you're talking that kind of money.
Used. The, the, you know, her, her analysis was an academic analysis. It was for her master's in engineering. And she had input from myself and others about, well, you know, if all, if you had a strong market, what would happen? So, she made some assumptions. If you have a weak market, what happens? And she made some assumptions, so. So, it's difficult. So, I, I, I don't know where we go with this. What's, when's the next meeting?
Economic Development? I don't know, the, we're gonna schedule another meeting for Housing. I haven't heard from Courtney about a final draft.
Has she, she drafted something up yet?
I, I don't know. I know Roberta's gonna draft something up, and her suggestion was to actually take it before the entire Master Plan Committee. And I don't know if there would be a separate housing group meeting coming out of that as well.
Well, it sounds like you had new, new people show up at this, which is good.
And we did at Housing, too.
Oh, good. Well, okay, I think we need to get a report from Courtney, just see what she's coming up with right now.
Okay.
And then, what, what happened at Housing? You were there and you...
Yeah, I'll write up some notes, but Pete and I will sit down and write them up, but it was a very active group. Chris Horan came and others that were very interested in it. It was a very active group for about seven people.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was good.
Well, I, most of you weren't even in town at the time, but some, few years ago, Vince Russo tried to, when he was on the Board of Selectmen, he tried to pull together a, oh, he did pull together a group of local business people. And we screwed around with it for, I don't know, six months or so, and it kind of just fizzled. You know, nobody, nobody could see, you know, any light at the end of the tunnel.
For how, for Housing?
No.
No, no, I'm back on, sorry.
Oh, you're back.
Yeah, that's fine.
Business development, yeah.
Economic Development Task Course.
Yeah, you were on the planning board then, I remember.
Uh, yeah.
But you weren't, Judy was the planner.
Right.
I can see bits and pieces, I can see cleaning up the act, I can see cleaning up some of the businesses on Route One. I think that can be done.
Those would be good goals and may be doable, and if they're not doable, we haven't spent any money...
Right.
In order to fix, you know?
But, but the issue of the, of the water is tough.
I'm gonna start yelling at them and...
The selectmen, I mean, right now, we have a major issue, which is this building and the place.
Oh, yeah.
And I don't see the town jumping up and down about doing anything on water in the next five to ten years.
I, I, no. Not, I mean, I wouldn't vote for it unless I had a bunch of, uh, purchases and sale agreements in my hand.
Where, where you would vote for it is if, if you had a remake of the Little River and a developer was saying, we're willing to do this.
Somebody that is gonna take care of all of the problems.
So, maybe that's where we have to leave this and just leave it. I don't know. But it's worth a discussion.
As far as the cleanup on Route One, the planning board does have some authority over projects which have been approved recently. And we can go in and take a look at them to see if they're in compliance.
Right. And in terms of the other, we have no authority, but it's stuff I've done in the past, and you act, you just go in and you talk to people. You just say, hey, I'm from the planning board, from the town, we're doing all this work on Route One, we've done this. Do you have any plans? And you get into a discussion with them, and they tell you, well, you know, I don't want to do it, or whatever. And so, if you do that in a concerted way, you may get some people to say, well, you know, that's a good idea.
What you're suggesting doesn't cost any money, doesn't take over the town meeting, does, you know?
It takes the impetus of individuals who want to do it.
Exactly, exactly, and that, I think, is definitely worth exploring.
And I think it's worthwhile.
Martha, could you ask Town Council if it's possible, and this is for the selectmen, not for this board, for conditions upon business license renewals?
I'll ask.
Yeah, that's, I think that was a great question, that whoever raised that.
Yeah, we do it, yeah.
It's a great question.
Well, either me or Pete, I forget.
You could share that.
Yeah, we'll share it.
Okay, then, Housing? What, where did you go with, with Housing?
I'll write up some minutes on that for the next meeting.
Okay.
And Peter and I will get together to do that.
And Roberta's writing up something, too?
Yes.
Okay.
Draft. She's writing up a third draft, which looks like it might be the final draft.
Right. Oh, good.
But we're gonna have a meeting to review that, instead of just saying, we're done.
Well, I think, probably the next two meetings, I'd like to go to, you know, both of these things, if I can. Sorry I missed them. Well, that's good.
We missed some cookies, too, Joe.
Well, you know, you know, it's kind of a sorry state of affairs that, that no one, that's what you're known for, bringing the cookies.
Roberta brought some.
Did she? They probably weren't as good, were they? They probably weren't good, were they?
No.
No! Board of Selectmen and MVPC, Martha?
Not, not too much at the Board of Selectmen's meeting last time, and I missed the, the one before. I did go to the MP, MVPC meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I appreciate it.
It was good that I was there, since I, I was the quorum.
Oh, you were?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And I do actually have the packet for you, if you want it.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
But, um, it was, it was interesting to be there, because I'm, I'm usually there at the planners' meetings, and so, you know, it was a slightly different slant on things. But they did, they did approve the, the budget for an update of the FY sixteen budget and approved the FY seventeen budget, so we now have our, our town assessment for FY seventeen, which is...
Twenty-one hundred dollars or something like that?
Um, yeah, it's twenty, twenty-three something, I think. Went up fifteen, fifty-seven dollars, twenty-three sixty-one. They are establishing a search committee for the new director, and Bob Snow is taking the lead on that.
Oh, Bob Snow?
Yes.
Oh, I thought it was Bob Lavoy.
Oh, I'm sorry, it is Bob Lavoy, I'm sorry, I'm wrong.
Anyway, I sent a note to Nancy.
Yep. So, they hope to have a, a recommendation by the middle of September. And then, most of the rest of it was really, they, they approved the affirmative action plan, and the rest of it was updates from Tony and Joe and everybody on...
Where is Tony with his transportation element of the master plan?
Um, they've done, they've analyzed crash data, um, you know, they did their, their projections, which we somehow need to coordinate with whatever Roberta's doing. And so, he said he thinks that he's ready for, you know, some sort of a, a working group meeting to, to discuss what they have, so...
Okay.
I want to go forward and set that up.
Yeah, all right, good. And any progress at all on the cultural side of the master plan? Just out of curiosity?
It's next.
Next. Okay. Tom?
The big thing, of course, is Borrego, but we're basically...
Waiting.
We're, we're just a casual observer at this point. We have no, no dog in that fight. It's totally between Borrego and D E P. And, you know, the neighbors have strong feelings about things.
Yes.
And, you know, they're continuing to write letters and so forth.
Right.
Beyond that, Doug, I have not, I failed to talk to him very recently, but he went after the engineer at Cammott's office that is supposed to be keeping track of what Angela was doing.
Oh.
And he asked him for a letter stating that everything was perfect, and of course, he hasn't heard back, and the reason being, he, one would lose one's license if you said anything remotely like that. So, that, that's still, still out there hanging. He has to, at least in my opinion, he has to tear up a fair amount of rap and replace it with gravel.
Is that on Sled Road or on his own property?
His own property, I think.
Uh, no, Sled Road is put to bed, that's okay, yeah. We got a reasonable thing going there. James had a look at him, and he was doing okay. That is not an issue anymore. It's mostly out back. He's paved, if you can call it, rap pavement.
Yep.
He's basically got an impervious surface, probably two and a half times the size of what got permitted. So, that has to be cut back. It's not a huge thing to ask, it's not that big a deal. But making it happen is, is always problematic.
Okay. I haven't driven by there lately. Has Bill made any progress on Route One?
Um, he's continuing. I think foundations for all three buildings are in now.
I haven't been by there.
And, um...
We, we need to...
Well, we were gonna schedule a site visit, which didn't happen while either of us was away. So, we can, and he said we were welcome to come out anytime, so if the board would like, I can try to get that set up.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Yeah.
I still want to see it.
Spring?
It looks good from the road.
Yeah, and it's, it, if it thaws, it's gonna be really muddy out there.
If it what?
If it thaws, it's gonna be really muddy out there.
No, no rush.
Well, I think we need to...
But we do need, we need...
Do we not need to respond to his most recent email to you?
Well, that, and that was part of the site visit. The board talked about going out there.
So, if we wait until things dry out...
Yeah, no, it should be done.
I would say we've already waited longer than we should, but that would be not defensible if we waited until it dries out.
Yep, no, it should be done soon. So, I'll contact him and send an email out and see...
Okay.
When everybody's available. Actually, I forgot a couple of things on MVPC, if I can go back to that.
Delighted.
They, they have confirmed that they're gonna do the pictometry flyover, not this spring, but next spring.
The town has bought into that?
And Tracy signed it, and I sent that back today.
I was politic on that. I wondered what the hell, who the hell she thought she was talking to. The, the assessor from Salisbury. She asked me to put, put my two cents worth in. The, the assessor from Salisbury. She asked me to put, put my two cents worth in. Asking me to put two cents worth in anything this high tech is kind of problematic, but. In any event, she was hopeful that Newbury would, so that.
Yep, yep, no, Tracy, yeah, Tracy had signed, you know, basically signed on for the one that was going to be for this year, but not enough communities did, so. More have signed up for next year, so Gerard is, you know.
Yeah, good.
It looks like they're pretty well set. And on pictometry, I'm going to send an email out to everybody. Pictometry has updated its, its website, and there is going to be a training, a what kind of, basically a webinar on, um, I think it may be the 18th, I'm not sure. The information is the same, but the way to get to it is a little bit different, and if, um, if you go to it through MyMap, it no longer remembers your login information, so if you haven't saved it in some other way, let me know and I'll give it to you, but I will send out an email tomorrow about the training.
Okay.
And the other thing that Susan brought up with me today is, um, she requested that I talk to Gerard about the possibility of getting a public version of MyMap, similar to what.
For the town, like Newburyport has?
Yeah, similar to what Newburyport has.
And what, what makes, what allows that to happen?
Gerard would set that up, um, and I want to talk to Tracy to make sure that she's, you know, comfortable with doing that. And what Newburyport did, their public version doesn't have all of the information that they have on their private version.
Right, I mean, you, you screen out.
You screen out stuff.
You screen out stuff.
And we actually don't have that much.
I think that'd be terrific.
So, but I, I, I actually got a phone call today from somebody who's interested in, in, in citing a marijuana dispensary in town, and.
See, it's about time.
And he, he wanted, he was wondering whether we had, he could access MyMap so that he could, you know, check all the setbacks and see if there was even any site that would work for them, so.
Speaking of people calling you, have you heard anything about a developer out on Locken Road?
The one in.
Where it bends?
The one in Georgetown.
There was this proposed subdivision.
Yeah, there's a.
Georgetown, I thought, I misunderstood. I thought it was Newbury.
The land, the land.
James told me about it.
Right, the land is in Georgetown, but the frontage is Newbury.
Oh, okay.
So, and I haven't heard anything more about that.
That was like three or four months ago.
It sounds like there may well be an opportunity to get that Locken Road culvert slash bridge replaced.
There was some discussion about that the last time. Nick Cracknell came and talked to the, the selectmen about it.
Oh, really?
And it wasn't clear that the developer was interested in doing that. They, they would fix it up enough for bike and pedestrian.
You can't do that. You can't, you can't give that. The state wouldn't let them do a, a Band-Aid on that. They'd have to replace it and do it right. James indicated that he's backed off from that position and that he may well replace the culvert if James paves the road. And James felt that that was a pretty good deal, and I totally agree. It's a great deal.
Yeah, absolutely. So I haven't, I'll, I'll follow up on that and see if.
Yeah, I mean, this, this problem is, not everybody agrees that we really need to have that road connecting.
Right, yeah.
In principle, it's, even if it saves a few minutes for an ambulance or a fire truck, sometimes that's the difference between life and death, so.
And there was also discussion at the meeting about, you know, bus pickup for schoolchildren and things like that, so.
Zoning Board of Appeals.
Zoning Board of Appeals did have a meeting, and there were three cases, of which I had paperwork on, and there was a fourth, I think. I was not at the meeting because of family obligations. Happy to say they were on vacation here from California, John.
Isn't that funny, huh?
Yeah. So what I will do is find out what the results of those hearings were, and I will report on the 16th.
Okay.
I can report on one of them, which is the A and R that we reviewed on Rolle Slane that needed the frontage variance, and that was approved, so I have a draft of the A and R to review, and then that'll come before the board.
I think the property's sold too. The sign is down.
This was different, this was the one, um, he was just doing a land swap with the neighbors. It wasn't Mr. Adler.
Wasn't Adler?
No. No, this is Scott Signori. He's number four. Adler was number eight. So just.
Or is it Mansard Roof?
I think so. I think so.
Okay. Anybody have any other comments or thoughts? Like, a motion to.
Move to adjourn?
Adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Done.